I'd like to call this meeting of the Monticello City Council to order. Would you please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing as Mr. Burris leads us in prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you once again for bringing us together. We ask you to be with us as we make great decisions and wise decisions for our city. We love you and appreciate your... Amen?
Amen.
Please wrap up here. I forgot about the prayer.
Mr. Woodham?
Here.
Mr. Carey?
Here.
Ms. Lively?
Here.
Mr. Piercy?
Here.
Mr. Brock?
Here.
Mr. Broderick?
Here.
Mr. Coon?
Here.
Mr. Burris?
Here.
Ms. Yoon? Present.
Thank you very much. Public participation, in-person participation, this is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. Those wishing to speak are required to sign in prior to commencement of the meeting and must address council from the seat and table provided. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. Remote participation, this is an opportunity for the public to provide public comment to the presiding officer. The public comments must comply with ordinance 2014-02 and be limited to five minutes or less. At this time, members of the public are able to attend meeting, public meetings by web conference and to submit public comment by email, voicemail, or through web conference. We have Tim Heck speaking first this evening.
Yeah. I'm here representing the soon-to-be 10 businesses that are located along the, what we are now calling the West Washington Corridor. That area has expanded greatly in the last couple of years, and so I just like to, people are here for that. We have Jennifer Johns from Simply JJ Boutique, Riley Brown is here from Sage Nutrition, we just received word that Just Be Acai will be located in the 204 location, Modern Blends, Jamie Saban at 206, Yogo Off the Square at 208, Zimmer Gallery 210, Brown Bag Deli with Leslie Sims at 212, Balance and Beauty newly opened with Melissa Good at 214, I'm Tim Heck for Acting Company at 216, and Cole Norton of American Time Insurance and Cole Norton Agency at 220. We have recently learned that the streetscape for West Washington has once again been put on hold. I'm relatively new, we've been in business for less than six months, but part of the research into opening a store front here was that concern and people that we talked to in that process that represents the community here at large, we're fairly certain that that is going to be happening. So, the development is very confusing and disappointing to all of us because we were, as business owners, assured that the engineering phase would be happening this year in 2025, realizing that the engineering phase does not preclude or does not guarantee any specific things and what can or can't be done, but that would be the first step. And the implementation could potentially happen in 2026. There was also some concern, again, I'm speaking kind of coming into this after the fact, with the wooden structure that the swings had placed on the front of 202, 204, and 206, and that there was some holdup or concern that we shouldn't, the city shouldn't move forward until that was addressed. Well, that was addressed going on probably 10 months now. So, from our perspective, it seems like things were moving along. Many of our patrons that visit our stores are older, some have special needs with the use of a cane, walker, or wheelchair, and the steps into our businesses make it challenging and sometimes impossible for customers to access our stores and businesses. Cole Norton has given me permission, he has cited that clients have complained to him about the issue of the stairs leading to the building and are inquiring why is it that that half of the street is not look like the portion directly across in terms of accessibility and the redoing of all that sidewalk and entrances to the buildings. He's also estimated on loss of over $10,000 in revenue from people who have physically or verbally told him, "I'm going somewhere else, I cannot continue to do business when I can't get into the establishment." We are here asking the council for an explanation or clarification as to why the streetscape was not included in the budget as previously indicated. I am unfamiliar with city government, I don't know how that happens where something happens and all of a sudden it's just without explanation just dropped, when it affects people who are investing in the city of Monticello, business owners, and again, the hundreds of thousands of people who come to our town, not all those need the handicap accessibility, but there are some that do that. As I said before, that was a concern, or I wouldn't say concern, but certainly something that I put into the process of deciding to open a business here in Monticello, and the fact that we knew would be two years down the road, I've actually cited that to customers. My high school piano teacher grew up here, had to help her into the building in September for the grand opening, and I said, "Hey, don't worry, I know this isn't convenient, but it's on the thought. Next year, no, 2025, it's going to be the engineering phase, and then we're going to move forward with some kind of assistance." And that's just what I've been telling people because that's what I was told in the beginning processes. So, we're asking you to at least reconsider amending the budget to include this this year for 2025 with the hopes that we could then move more quickly forward in 2026.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I did want to tag on to that, just personally speaking. I had hip surgery.
You're Jennifer Johns.
Oh, I am, sorry.
It's okay.
Simply J.
I knew that.
We go way back. Anyway, I personally had hip surgery back in December and had to be non-weight bearing for six weeks and using a wheelchair for part of that time, couldn't get into my own building. The bathroom is accessible, but the stairs are not, and I guess it just gave me a little bit of a different perspective of how hard it is for people who use mobility devices, like to get from point A to point B, and then to have so many, like a huge chunk of our businesses not accessible. It's just, it's something that is really important. It's important to me personally, it's important to our businesses, and I think to our communities, so. And then we wanted to address the issue of the parking lot along 105, the garbage debacle that's there. It's an eyesore. I understand that it is in the budget for this year to redo the parking lot, and I'm hoping that that's going to move forward, but we've had issues the last, how long? GFL just doesn't do a great job of picking up when they're supposed to, basically, and so you have garbage all over the place, and then we've got two dumpsters right there along the road, as well as the brown bag has it down, it's just, it's a mess. So, we're just here to reiterate, like, that's not a great presentation, you know, people coming to our downtown, that's what they see, so I'm really hoping that that can be remedied this year as well.
Okay, thank you very much. I could turn a page. Consent agenda, approval of documents and action items is listed, claims report, claims January 28 through 28, 25 through February 10, 2025, treasurer's report in November 2024, permit report January 2025, police report January 2025, fire report January 2025. To approve the claims as presented. So moved. For a second.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions for city staff? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, vote please.
Yes. Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Thank you. The mayor's report. Yes. Oh, I didn't ask, I'm sorry. Is anyone there?
There is not, but you might ask if you.
Is anyone there that would like to speak to the council? I'm sorry, out of sight, out of mind, so. But, okay, I just wanted to report, normal procedure during public participation is we listen to your concerns and we take them under advisement, so I'm assuming that you will hear something in the near future about your concerns, okay? So, don't think I'm ignoring you, that's just the way we do business, okay? Is that right, Mr. Carey?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. Don't mind mayor's report, I don't want to forget about this, this is a good one. Shop late till 8:00 PM at the Gallantine Shopwalk in downtown Monticello on Thursday, February 13th, that's 5:00 to 8:00? And you're both participating, right?
Yes.
I knew you were, so, thank you very much. That's my report. New business, ordinance 2025-11, and ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with the Monticello and Kathleen Pye for 108 West Washington Street. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, you had quite a few of the building grants proposals your way, and we have a couple more for you this evening. Kathleen Pye, which owns 108, excuse me, who owns 108 West Washington Street, that is the Burgess and Klein Building, submitted her initial application to replace the metal covering, the cornice at the top, it was kind of not attached very well. One of the things that the review committee is very proud of and takes very seriously is that if it's a contributing property in the historic district, which most of downtown is, they want to not encourage in non-historical improvements, and because that metal covering is not historic, they went back to the applicant and asked if she would consider removing the metal altogether and repairing the brick cornice work underneath. It's, I think I included pictures in that in your submittal of some other examples that we have in downtown. No, this one actually ties in with the next one as well because that metal covering of the cornice is contiguous with the next, it's a four-building stretch, right? Just, it's all one thing. So, it looked kind of silly to just have that one section repaired and not address it on the next three buildings, and so the two property owners are actually working together, and this one is the 108 West Washington Street portion of that building. It would be to remove the metal cornice covering and repair and restore the top three and a half feet of the original brick cornice. Estimated project cost is $5,000, and the committee is recommending reimbursement of 50% of the total cost up to $2,500.
Thank you. Any comments or questions, Callie? Hearing or seeing none, is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-11?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
One more chance, any comments, questions? Hearing or seeing any, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-12, and ordinance approving the First Amendment to a redevelopment agreement with the city of Monticello and RNS Unlimited Incorporated for 1010 through 1014 West Washington Street. Callie?
Thank you. Same project, remove that metal cornice and replace the, or repair and restore the brick cornice for 110, 112, and 114 on the south side, and then just about three or four feet on the west side of that building, because the council already awarded RNS with a grant last month to complete her facade, this would just be amending that with an additional $5,000 just to cover those costs associated, so they're still separate buckets as it relates to projects.
Any comments or questions? What was the original amount?
That she got?
Yeah.
$10,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think her, I think her project was about 30, it was over.
This is a different.
Yeah. Yep.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-12?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Last chance, questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2025-13, an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with the city of Monticello and Heath Properties LLC for the property at 1056 South Market Street. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. One of the exciting things about this program just was it expanded beyond the downtown, but it can also be used to encourage new development, which is something that certain components of the TIF cannot be used for. So, Heath Property owns the, everyone calls it the Blue Apartment Building by RP Lumber down there, they recently went through with the council to get a variance for, and that subdivision of that parcel will be coming, they would like to subdivide the front part of that and construct a commercial building, they have a tenant in place, and they have requested funds to offset that construction cost. Estimated total project cost is $650,243, and the grant committee is recommending approval of up to $10,000.
Okay, any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-13?
Given that it's new business, motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 2025-14, TIF, TIF Redevelopment Agreement, Heath Properties LLC. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. Same project, again, we can use the TIF increment generated from development, and which will in turn create increment from property taxes, from the investment, to use as an incentive, so staff is recommending a pay-as-you-go, meaning that is a predetermined amount that is generated, like a 50% split of what the property generates for the TIF would be reimbursed to the developer after property taxes have been paid. The TIF-eligible expenses for this project, same project we just discussed, would be for professional fees, site preparation, public improvements, and interest buydown, total estimated TIF-eligible expenses of $177,890. That being said, there's only five payable years left in the TIF district, and the developer knows that he's probably not going to recoup even a small portion of this, but the option is still out there. It's palatable to us because you're going from a vacant lot to an actual structure, so obviously it's going to be generating some property tax. Again, this is a business, a commercial business, allowed by right, all buildable plans use as everything will have to go before, you know, the city approval, and if it needs to have that extra layer for zoning, which it doesn't, it'll come before you as well. So, of the 15 goals identified in the redevelopment plan, this meets quite a number of them, which I won't read because you have listed in your memo, but staff is recommending a pay-as-you-go reimbursement of 50% beginning in tax year 2025, which will be next year, for the remainder of the TIF unless it's extended, in which case it still has that cap of $177,890.
Thank you. Questions? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-14?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Hearing or seeing none, I need a roll call, please.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-15, and ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 111 of the Monticello City Code of Ordinances concerning Class A liquor licenses. Callie?
Thank you. You guys are almost done with me, I promise. Legends Corner, which is the 219 West Washington Street, they have a Class B liquor license, they will be opening in about two weeks, that's the plan, so we're very excited to see that, but one of the things they wanted to do was to allow an option for their patrons to take, to buy a bottle of wine to go unopened, which would, takes a whole different class license, so they're requesting a Class A liquor license be created for them, which in turn, if granted, would get rid of a Class B that we have.
Got you. Comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 25-15?
Move.
Second?
Second.
Any comments? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Moving on to ordinance 2025-16, an ordinance amending, I just do that, no, amending Title 11, Chapter 111 of the Monticello City Code of Ordinances concerning Class B liquor licenses. Callie?
Thank you, Mayor. You'll be pleased to know the new owners of the Monarch Event Center closed on the property today, and so they would like to continue the event center use and expand that to some special dinners and things like that, but they need a liquor license to do so, so they don't have to shop out their bar service every event, so that would be a Class B to be created for their purpose.
Any comments or questions? Are we really adding another liquor license there, or is that just?
In theory, so, the way it is now is as an, as an establishment surrenders, like, or like, uh, thank you, I wanted to say Fieldhouse of, as they just did, they gave up their B for an A, then it automatically goes away, that way we don't have to come back before you or have one open and hanging out there.
Okay. To approve ordinance 2025-16?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-17, an ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing the purchase of property. Mr. Summers?
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance is by state statute, we have to declare surplus property and purchase equipment, so this ordinance gets rid of, we will trade in, outward scraper and a John Deere backhoe towards a new compact wheel loader. Public Works guys feel very strongly about the wheel loader will assist in brush pickup and do a better job than the backhoe will. Backhoe sometimes digs into the front yards, this should help that, I don't know if it will eliminate it, but you have more sight in a wheel loader than you do in the backhoe. So, it is recommended, city council approve, ordinance 2025.
Was budgeted for, correct?
This was, yes, thank you.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-17? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, are there any comments or questions? Hearing or seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 2025-18, an ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing the purchase of property. Mr. Summers?
Again, same state statute, and this again was included in the 2025 budget, trading in a 2012 mini excavator towards 2024, newer model mini excavator, both of these, again, were included in the budget, both of these are under the budgeted amount, so it is staff's recommendation to approve ordinance 2025-18.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Is there a motion to approve ordinance 2025-18?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? Before I had a roll call?
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Woodham?
Yes.
Mr. Carey?
Yes.
Ms. Lively?
Yes.
Mr. Piercy?
Yes.
Mr. Brock?
Yes.
Mr. Broderick?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. Burris?
Yes.
Thank you. The mayor's report. Andrea?
I have nothing.
Cole?
No, sir.
And good luck.
Good luck, oh, thank you.
Ice fishing.
Yes.
For you.
Well, I want to say thank you to everyone that came to speak today, represent the businesses, just to reiterate what the mayor said, the fact that we're not discussing it, it doesn't mean that we're ignoring it, this will definitely be something that we all talk about, and we will stay on top of, we apologize for miscommunication or anything, but it is something we'll look at going forward, and thank you for investing in our community.
Okay. Nothing?
I was going to ask questions about, I thought we, I'm very concerned about the ADA part of this.
Thank you.
Have we really pushed this off? What's the deal? I'd like to know what the, what's going on with this.
During budget discussions for, that occurred in 2024, for FY 2025, this project was not discussed, it was not put on hold or anything.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, we pushed through Oberheim, where this is an issue that we have ADA non-compliance with, is that what I'm, is that what I'm hearing?
We have non-compliance ADA on this strip of Washington Street, yes. The 2000, the original streetscape, that most of the square proper, was done in 2000, and to their point, it's on the north side of Washington Street and west of Charter, the streetscape started and went about one, one building?
Not even.
Not even half of?
Yeah.
The width of the building, and the engineers postponed extending the streetscape project at that time due to those encroachments that were mentioned earlier, and the concern of the buildings, and, you know, can we get in there with a jackhammer and the buildings not fall down? And that was in 2000, but we, we did not discuss this staff-wise for inclusion in 2025.
We may need to get on that.
What's that?
We may need to get on that.
Yeah.
I mean, I have it in, I have it in my notes.
Do we have any idea of ballpark of some sort of number?
I have no number. In my notes, I had preliminary engineering in 2026, but if it's the desire of the council to amend the appropriation ordinance, I will reach out to the consulting firm that does those on our behalf, they did the south side of Washington Street X number of years ago. If you recall, the south side of Washington Street, as you go from the alley west to Market Street, we bumped that out.
Yes.
The sidewalk and boulevard and elevated concrete with railing
Yeah.
to meet ADA requirements. And we lost all those parking stalls. Without the engineering, I don't know what, we, we may have to lose par, for what it's worth.
Right.
May have to lose the parking in front of those buildings.
Yeah, I, I think.
Or maybe go parallel parking.
I think that's probably a wise swap to.
Yeah. I agree. It's tricky.
Yeah. I didn't realize that they'd been that long and it's been going on. Okay. Thank you for your.
If, if the council so desires, I'll get all the engineers to.
Why don't you, why don't you do that? Maybe you can have something for us for the next meeting if that would be proper.
Um, I don't know if it'd be the next meeting.
Right.
But get them all and
I understand.
Together. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing else, sorry.
That's fine. No problem. Tom?
Nothing.
Nothing. Wendell?
Only a couple of things. I hope the business owners that you stayed tonight, I hope you understand some of what's going on here. And I hope that in your business budgets, personal businesses in the future, that you include money for maintenance. These are old buildings. You're in an area that has structural concerns from years back for those buildings. And I'm not telling you, we're putting lipstick on a pig, but you need to have maintenance money set aside because there will be constant maintenance on those buildings. There, you can't touch up the outside and fill in the cracks in the brick and make a new building out of it. My, my father carpentered his whole life and his statement was, when you remodel an old house, when you get done, you got an old house that you spent a lot of money on. So be mindful of that and I, your places look great. The, the businesses are great. I've been there over the holidays. I appreciate what you're doing and what you're bringing to town. But the, be mindful that there's maintenance down the road. Also, I have some friends that live south of here in the Mattoon Charleston area and were in contact with me last week. Mattoon has opened their rec facility that they built in the country out there. It's an 80, 80 million dollar project. And they have the first phase open now and they're advising me it's everything they said it would be and more. So if you want to drive down there and take a look, please take a look. But they're in the process of expanding multiple ball diamonds and multiple fields and multiple things. Large piece of property, couple, couple hundred acres involved in it, but an 80 million dollar budget.
Do you know how much they chewed up? Do you know how much they chewed up in this first phase?
I don't for sure. There are a couple, they built a couple, three buildings and they've opened an arcade and they've opened a restaurant and
Okay.
some things going.
It's a lot more.
But there's a huge amount yet to go as far as construction of the fields and stuff, but they have the, so big money project, but they say it's, it looks like it's going to be everything they promised it would be.
Yeah.
So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Eric?
Well, I want to second on Rodney. I would like that to be addressed in regards to the ingress, egress, whatever you want to say in regards to the north side of Washington. However, we need to also talk about the dumpster issue on Livingston. I mean, that is, Market is a main thoroughfare. Coming in and looking at that, when people are coming to our town, it looks messy.
We're all aware of that.
I know. That needs, but it needs, it needs to be addressed instead of just look away. So that's that.
You don't under, you don't understand what's planned, I don't think, because that's being addressed, if I'm correct, with the resurfacing, et cetera, of the parking lot. Is that correct?
Yeah. So the, the pavement rehabilitation of subway parking lot is what we call it. Is, includes a dumpster enclosure for
Dumpsters.
I don't know. There's four, three or four or five dumpsters and I share your sentiments with GFL. Staff has worked with GFL to get smaller dumpsters and more frequent pickup. Fingers crossed. But the, the improvements to, to the parking lot will enclose, will include a dumpster enclosure.
Okay. Okay.
I have a quick question on that. So has the, we did an agreement with them that for the single dumpster, has that taken effect yet? Or will that only take effect once the enclosures are in place? And is that something that we can do?
Right.
To get the dumpsters out there and then worrying about enclosing them and all that at a later time to go ahead and get that process started? I mean, would that make their lives easier?
To be included in their water bill. It will not be included in the water bill.
Commercial.
It's a commercial agreement that we signed in October, so we're like
Last May, actually.
May?
So the, the initial plan was to actually remedy that dumpster situation at that time. And I'm guessing the staffing issue with our public works that was going to handle all of that, it just, it didn't get, didn't get gotten to for lack
Is that something that we could do now or do we have to wait until the resurfacing's done?
To answer into an agreement with GFL? Is that what you're asking, Ryan?
Whatever the agreement was that we signed with the business owners to consolidate down.
Let me look into it.
Okay. Just to remedy that problem at least and
Yeah, I don't, I would, I would hate to say something that's not, not true, so. You done, Eric?
I guess.
Thanks, Mike.
I'm just going to reiterate, I think this is a project that needs to be addressed. And I'm assuming there's a deadline that we need to approve for appropriations. Is there April 1 or something like that? We have to have that.
You can amend the appropriation ordinance after that.
Okay.
The budget needs approved in the first quarter.
The first quarter, so that
Finance Director?
It'll be the end of March. Right. So this can be, this could
Be adjusted.
In theory, be included.
In theory, it could be.
If we do it before the end of March. So I'm hoping
Yeah.
that'll, this, I can speak for people here that I think we're, at least or as, as an option, so we can get that fast tracked.
It is very clear that I'm going to get with Esca Consultants.
Okay.
And this council, some numbers to
I appreciate that.
Appropriations.
That's one of my biggest pet peeves since I've sat in the mayor's chair is that, that parking lot and that trash situation has always been bad. And how many times have I complained about it over the years? And we've just been waiting to get everything lined up, so.
Yeah. And so I, I'm piggybacking on that. One of the complaints that I think is maybe not as legitimate that we hear from people is that, hey, we don't have a parking downtown. Well, that's not true. We have parking downtown, but we need to address the Livingston because if that's a nice parking, then that becomes a great alternative. It's not very far from these businesses, but it's tough to, to come back and people complain that we don't have a parking downtown if that lot is not, you know,
Insensible.
is in the shape that it's in.
Yeah.
So I, I think we can, once that is complete, I think it makes it easier to come back and say, hey, we have plenty of parking in downtown. It just is in these lots as opposed to, you know, if we do the streetscape and we lose some parking there, fine, but we've got, we'll have plenty of nice parking.
And it goes, and it goes, a lot of the parking issues downtown go back to the same old issue that's been there since I've lived in this community. The courthouse uses those spots for parking. That car was a problem.
Yeah. But we've got, we've got nice, we will have nice lots that
Yes.
I within a couple of blocks, which is not going to be any different than any
Yes.
the other town our size. So, but we need to get this in care of.
Thank you very much.